It's to discuss the superintendent interviews that have been conducted the last week or so. But before we begin, if everybody could please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are getting started a little late today. I was running behind and I know a couple of the members as well, but I felt it was important to wait till we had the full complement of school committee members because of it being such an important topic and all of the members are here tonight. As I mentioned, we just have one item on the agenda to discuss the six candidates that were interviewed for the position of school superintendent for our district. Last Wednesday evening, we interviewed Arthur Yunobski, Laura Chason, and Deborah Rogirio, and then last evening, we interviewed Peter Bedalament, John O'Terry, and Lorenzo Garcia. And all six were candidates worthy of meeting and worthy of hearing from. I want to commend all of the members of the committee for what I thought was a very first-rate professional interview. We asked many questions of the six candidates focusing on budget, union negotiations, special education, instructional methods, communication, grant experience, technology, and vision for PBD in the future, and there were others as well. But I thought the questions were very appropriate, important questions to be asked, and I wanted to commend all the committee members for the work that went into that. Very difficult decision for us, and I thought we rose to the challenge during this interview process, at least for this stage. Tonight, we have some decisions to make if the school committee is ready to do so. We need to determine if we wish to retain any of those candidates that we interviewed for a second round or a final round. We need to determine what would be the next step in that next round. We could set up a timeline to bring them in for an additional interview, take some time to check references. We can do site visits, which I know has been done in the past, and there's been some value from those. But really, it's up to us as to what next steps we want to take. But those have been some of the ones that are typically undertaken: further interview, site visits, inviting them here to not only interview questions from us, but maybe meet some of the staff, meet some of the other city and community leaders as well. And we need to kind of set up a schedule, maybe with some dates, that we may be available in order to undertake those site visits and those interviews. I believe we have a school committee set up for next Tuesday evening, a regular committee meeting, and going forward, of course, we have the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. So with those opening remarks, certainly be ready to open it up to any member right now that would like to speak regarding their thoughts as to what we want to do with the next step in terms of holding on, retaining some candidates, and inviting them to be further part of whatever process we think is appropriate. Anybody like to open things up? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I enjoyed meeting and interviewing all six of the candidates. At this time, I do realize we have to narrow it down to, in my mind, would be three finalists that I would like to take a deeper look at, possibly with the site visits, further interviews, a little bit more checking with references. And I'll just get the ball rolling and put this out there and see what the other members are thinking. But I would personally like to take a deeper look at three candidates. One of them is Mr. John O'Terry. The other one was Mr. Arthur Yunobski. And the other candidate that I'd like to look at a little bit further is Deborah Rogirio. I would be inclined to make that in the form of a motion, to make them the three finalists.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Rozignol?
I want to echo both yours, Mr. Mayor, and Brandy's sentiments. I think all six candidates were excellent. I think they all brought something to the table, something different. I'm in agreeance with Ms. Carpenter regarding the three candidates to move forward. I think, for me, the next step would be having them come visit, as you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Our staff, having them, the opportunity, you know, principals, a few teachers, and the administrators, a chance to meet them, ask any questions that they feel appropriate, as well as set up site visits for all three of those candidates. I think all six were worthy, and I want to thank MASCE for doing their due diligence from narrowing down the field from what I believe was 19 to these six. And so I want to thank them publicly for their hand in the process, and I think those three candidates moving forward would be ideal for us to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mr. Olympio?
Through to the chair. I'm actually going to keep this real boring, and really, I echo the sentiments of Mr. Rozignol and Ms. Carpenter. I would be inclined to go further with those three that were mentioned, and really, it was a tough decision. All six candidates were really top-notch people, had great resumes, but I would be, I agree with Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Rozignol.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank MASCE for their work in this process. I'd like to also recognize my fellow committee members for the manner in which you conducted yourselves in this interview process. It was interesting to see the six people that were put forward out of the 19 candidates. I don't know that I echo that all six were qualified, but it was interesting to interview them, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to meet with them. With regard to the motion that's before us, excuse me, I can see moving two of those three candidates forward. While I thought Ms. Rogirio was a very nice person and very candid in her responses, I would have a hard time making a vote for her to be the next superintendent of PBD Public Schools based upon the resume that I saw and the responses to those questions, but I would be in favor of moving Mr. O'Terry and Mr. Yunobski forward. And I also agree that we should have site visits, invite candidates to PBD to meet with department heads, fire chief, police chief, TPW, and people along those lines, and look forward to undertaking that process.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. I'll allow that. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Huckman. I understand what you're saying completely. I just would ask that you maybe reconsider because my motion is just to look at them a little bit deeper. Not necessarily, we're ready for any of them at this point, but it's a consideration, it's a motion to just to look a little bit further at them. And we may not be ready for any of them, but it's just to go a little bit further.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Any other comments at this time? Anybody? Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. I just wanted to, again, thank everyone. This has been a very interesting process, and it was nice to meet all six candidates. They each came with some really specific strengths, and it was nice to be able to ask them about that, have them put that out there, what they've done, what their philosophy is, and you know, what their experiences are. I do want to say a few things. I actually, I have a lot of reservations about all of the candidates, to be honest, because I personally was hoping for a lot more experience. We have a very big school system. It's, there are so many moving parts to a public school system, and PBD has a lot of different things going all at the same time. Each of these candidates had some specialties in some of those areas, but there was no one with all of the experience I wanted. I'd also like to say that when we set the salary range, I voted in favor of a higher salary because I was hoping to attract someone who had experience. I felt willing to pay for experience because, to me, that was very important. We received resumes and the candidates who were elementary principal, high school principals, and assistant superintendents, and it's all, I know everyone has a great potential to make a wonderful superintendent, but I honestly don't feel that we have the time to wait for someone to learn the job or to get that type of experience. And I think that that was really, really important. So I respect all the people that came before us, and I liked some of them. I liked a lot of what I saw, but I will, I will put it out there that I'm very, very concerned. I don't know how, I don't know how a person comes to a system this size without having experience in budget, collective bargaining, just the simple fact of dealing with 10 different schools, 10 different principals, all of the staff, and then, you know, close to 6,000 students. That's, it's a, it really is a big job, and I'm not minimizing anything that any of these folks have done. They're working their way up. I just really was looking for someone who had already been a superintendent, probably in a smaller district, and was ready for the next step. So I am going to follow the wishes of the majority of the committee. I know people want to bring people back, and I would like to see a couple of these candidates, to hear what they have to say. But I'm going to put that out there right now so you know where I'm coming from. And it's, I know, it's not really news to you because I've been saying it all along, but I just was hoping for someone who had already, who'd already been in that position for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to the committee. Ms. Dunn, you make a great point. When we met in the past school committee meetings regarding our search, I think most of us were in agreement that we wanted to have someone who had the experience, who could come in on day one and know exactly what was expected. So I too have reservations about the candidates. Although they were great, I thought they were very good. I just think it's, especially for the three principals, I think it really is a huge jump going from being a building manager to a citywide superintendent of many schools. But with that said, I'd like to also go with Ms. Carpenter's wishes on Mr. O'Terry, Ms. Yunobski, Ms. Rogirio, and I would also throw in Lorenzo Garcia in that mix as well. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, committee members? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor right now to retain or invite John O'Terry, Deborah Rogirio, and Arthur Yunobski for a second round or final round of interviews, and the motion is on the table. I'll go to you, Mr. Huckman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering if we could take up individual candidates in an individual vote rather than as a class, so that perhaps Mr. Miko can add a candidate or we would have the ability to vote against a particular candidate, but not necessarily against a block of candidates as it's currently on the floor.
It's, of course, up to the will of the committee. I would tend to move forward with more of a block.
Chair, it's up to Brandy to amend her motion right now. The motion is for all three candidates.
Yep. That's the motion in front of us. To, Mrs. Carpenter?
Through the chair, I was just asking Jared to clarify and just kind of, I'm absorbing the process and how this is going to change a little bit, just.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, and then I have my thoughts as well that I wanted to share.
Through you to Ms. Carpenter. Yeah, I guess to the extent that a committee member wishes to put a candidate forward and then take a vote on that candidate until we exhaust candidates that members wish to put forward.
Okay, I just would prefer that we, you know, speak as to the positives in terms of, these are the ones we would like to learn more about or discuss further. I don't want to vote against somebody. You know, I'd prefer to do it as, these are the ones that we'd like to discuss a little further. I think that would be at least my, my way of thinking on that. Okay, so we have in front of us three candidates that have been proposed under a motion by Mrs. Carpenter for a second round or a final round to take the next step and learn a little bit more about those candidates, their philosophy, learn a little bit about their school district, invite them to our school district. I think after we make this vote, I think we have to discuss what will be the next steps for us and to establish a bit of a timeline. So any further comments before we go to roll call? Okay, roll call vote. Guess I'll do it. Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mark, did you want to do it?
Who's the secretary?
Who is the secretary, actually? Mr. Olympio? Mr. Rozignol? Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
I'm last, but no.
Is it, Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Huckman?
No.
Mrs. Dunn?
No.
Okay. So four to two, we have voted to invite three candidates for a further interview, further round of discussion. Now we need to discuss a timeframe and the next steps we want to take in terms of the next round. I'll open it up, Mr. Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I suggest that MASCE contact Ms. Murtagh to set up an interview process to have those candidates come and spend a couple of hours with administration and staff and maybe have a tour of our buildings. I think that would be appropriate for the three candidates coming here. And might I also recommend that we also have MASCE set up site visits for all three of those candidates and get back to us as far as what their availability is.
Anybody else have thoughts on this? Mr. Huckman?
Yep. Mr. Rozignol, I think that's terrific outline of the process. I would just ask that maybe Ms. Macarelli do the coordination since she is our secretary and probably has a, might have some, I know she's busy too, but may have a little more time to do some coordination. And I ask that that coordination, unless there's, unless we plan on another round, I'd ask that that coordination extend beyond school buildings and beyond the school side of the city and extend to the Department of Public Works and fire chiefs and police chiefs and mayor's office and a lot of other department heads that the superintendent would be working with.
In fact, I agree. I'd like to have the MASCE go through me as the chairman of the school committee, and I would work with Ms. Macarelli to do work on the scheduling. But I do want to get, and I'd like to get some dates from each of you as to your availability because I know all of you have very busy, active schedules, and I want to try to get a sense of what days could work for you to go on site visits as well as your availability for somebody to come visit us. But I agree with Mr. Huckman that, you know, I'd like the police chief, director of public works, our health director, fire department, to have representatives as well to be engaged in this process. Okay? Mrs. Dunn, then I go to Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that when we do this, I know that the time is going to be very compressed, so the logistics will be hard on both sides as far as the candidates themselves will need to pull together their site visit that we would go to, and we also need to pull together our site visits. So I don't know if it would require, because it would require three separate days for us to go on-site visits, but I don't know if you're looking at three separate days for the candidates to come here or if they would be scheduled on the same day with, you know, a staggered visit to different places. I don't know how you would want to work it. I think Glenn Kuchar would be the best, you know, best advisor on what might be the best way to go.
I agree. I would speak to him. My feeling is we do it in staggered times during the course of a day, particularly if we're going to have other department heads involved who have a great deal going on themselves. I think we pick one day, invite them at different points of the day to travel and visit our schools and maybe have a sit-down with larger staff. That would be my thought. It'd be asking a lot to do three individual days, my feeling.
Right. And do you think that that day that they come out here to meet with our staff or to do, you know, to do our site visit, would that be the day that we would conduct the second round of interviews? Would we do it again that night, or would we, how would you do the actual interview by the school committee?
That's what the school committee, what you would recommend. I, you know, I think it could easily be done that way if everybody's comfortable doing that. Maybe invite them in staggered times during the course of the day with the interviews that evening to try to do it in one day, and then we have those site visits because Ms. Yunobski works, Dr. Yunobski works in Gloucester. Mrs. Rogirio is a principal over in Lynn, and then Mr. O'Terry is the headmaster principal over at Somerville. So they're somewhat in the area. So perhaps we could try to schedule a couple of those within a one-day period as well. But that would be my feelings on it, but I certainly want to hear everybody's thoughts. Mr. Rozignol, I know you had some comments?
My one thought was, is I think having the principals for 10 different schools take away basically one entire day may be difficult. Although it may be more convenient for some, that may not be the best use of their time for one day having all three candidates. So I think before we set the schedule for them to come here, I think with MASCE and your guidance, trying to come up with the best schedule that works for our staff as a whole, I think would be better than us determining that factor as far as them doing site visits here. As far as us going there, I do think that we can certainly do two in one day and maybe one in a morning or in an afternoon that we see fit. I think that would be conceivable. Now, I know there's six of us, and I know we have varying schedules by a great degree, but I think the good thing is, and what we've done in the past, when we've done site visits, not all of us have been able to attend, and we've relied on each other's point of view and references to make the best and most informed decision possible. So as far as candidates coming here, in my opinion, I think we leave that up to MASCE, the mayor's office for public works, and Cower, the reason why I mention her, Ms. Murtagh, is because she knows the principal's schedules better than anybody. So I think between those groups, they'll best be able to come up with the schedule for our, them coming here for visiting our district as far as us visiting theirs. I think we just have to reach out to Mr. Kuchar and see what is best for the candidates, and we kind of work our schedule around that.
Thank you. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the committee members for this conversation. And I think that you have outlined a very nice plan to move forward. And with that, I think it seems logical that we conduct site visits before we invite any candidates here. Because I'd like to, I wouldn't want to go through a second round of interview before I had a site visit. And if we're going to have, if we're going to have the interviews the evening that we bring all the candidates here, assuming we can get them here in one day, you know, the same day, I think we should do the site visits first. And I do, I echo Mr. Rozignol's sentiment, then if you can reach out to Mr. Kuchar, Mr. Mayor, and then inform him which three candidates we want to go visit and see what, when we could do that, and then figure out when we would host those candidates here in the great city of PBD.
Mr. Huckman? Mr. Rozignol?
In my understanding, or my estimation, is I wouldn't want to do another round of interviews until both occurred, to be honest with you. So I think they can, I wouldn't want to do another round of interviews until both occurred, them coming here and us going. So whether we go do a site visit first or whether they came here first, I don't know if that necessarily matters. I think the only way we have a meeting is when all of it is complete, because then we have a true reference from all three candidates. So if, for instance, Gloucester can do a site visit tomorrow, okay?
Just working off of Ms. Dunn's point that we would have interviews the night that the candidates came here, but we agree. Okay, okay.
Great. I mean, if there's no comments, I mean, my feeling is allow me the opportunity to work with MASCE, maybe coordinate with Marge at the administration office. I do believe that we should do site visits. My feeling is we should do site visits first because I kind of feel like the interviews and them coming here can be done on the same day, asking them to come all together. I think that could work. If not, I'll work on the schedule. But I agree that with both comments that we need the site visit and we need to go there, they need to come here, and then do the interview. Those two things need to be done before the interview. So let me work on the schedule. I'll try the best I can to put something together that works for the majority of us, knowing that each of us have quite a bit of responsibilities during the course of the day and might not have some flexibility. But I think if we could put some, you know, two, three, four of us to be able to be at the site meetings, I could put together a group of department heads on my end that I think would be, we'd gain some value from having them as part of the process as well. So if maybe, if a motion can just be made to allow me, working with MASCE, to put together a schedule that would accommodate as best we can the candidates and our schedules.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Huckman, second by Mr. Rozignol. On the motion?
Could you just try to avoid April 3rd? It's the only day that I'm own-available. It's opening day.
Mr. Miko, did you have a comment? You're good? Okay. April 14th, soon government day. No, but I do think that we want to, I want to, I'm going to reach out right away tomorrow morning, and I want to see if we can move this along. You know, this is a, you know, there are some timeframes I think we need to meet as a committee, and I'm going to try to see if we can schedule some meetings rather quickly. So, very good. Any other matters before we break?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, members.
And thank everyone for their, I apologize for being late this evening. I thank everyone for their patience.